So, I am calling to order the school committee meeting. This is Thursday, May 16, 2019, and I just want to note for everyone here that we are picked by Westwood Media Center to ask if anyone else is prepared for the meeting. Okay, great, well then we will start with the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just for all. So as this is the first school committee meeting following the annual town meeting, to you the school committee, this meeting reorganizes. And so at this time, I would entertain a motion for the position of chair.
I'd like to nominate Charlene Martin. Second.
Any discussion?
Excellent.
All in favor?
Is there a speech? Because I want to hear your stand.
No remarks. All right, all in favor. I, uh, great, and with that, we'll now hand the gavel over to Ms. Bellin.
Start shift.
Or take them when you sign. Who do you want to be today?
I'd like to nominate Joseph Johnny, because she's in the race.
Only because she's in the chair.
Sorry, this is serious business. I would like to nominate Joseph Johnny as vice chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Oh.
The motion for position of clerk.
I'll nominate Carol Wallace as clerk.
All those in favor?
All right, congratulations. Before I hand it over to the superintendent, I'd just like to make a few comments. We were supposed to have a ceremonial gavel.
Oh, we have.
We do.
Right there.
We do have a ceremonial gavel. So, in tradition, I'd like to just thank Charlie for his services chair, just a few things. Thank you for, I think it was a great budget process, and for all you did there. Second, for really getting us a great start on the building project. I think we're off to a great start because of your leadership. And finally, and most importantly, thank you for always reminding us of looking at the other towns when we're thinking of anything. So, thank you for your year. Thank you.
I've kept my speech very, very minimal here. The best decision I did for the thinking of our new school system is appoint my chair person. I'm very lucky in that. It's my pleasure working with Emily and Allison, the staff, and I just wanted to make a couple of showdough, right? There's some controversy about how well our school system is recently. Some other radical magazine ranked us in the 20s, but yours knows who will report ranked Westwood High School as the 13th best high school in Massachusetts. Three charter schools, so we're 10th as a public school system. So, it's an honor, and I think that the work deserves, the credit deserves a back to the school committees of many years, with Joseph having been there for the beginning of elementary. Joseph is the genius behind a lot of what's been going on.
She's the most lovely girl in the county.
The second thing, I just wanted to, about, Boston Globe is a very tough group to get. They're honoring anybody, but they do have this thing where they rank the best baseball teams and the best, we're Division III, we're one of the smallest towns, so really, you see anything. But, I saw about two weeks ago, they said that Westwood High Girls Across ranked second in all the greater Boston area. And the number one team was coached by a former Westwood High Girl. And so then there was a game out here at the last town meeting, and Westwood in double overtime won, so we're ranked double one in the greater Boston area. So, it's a real honor, and it's a small school that should be Division III, we played Division I, so I just wanted to shout out, congratulations to the girls. I also wanted to thank, you know, Shaun for the work that he's done. This is our fourth time, the only high school in the United States, that within the high school offers a Dale Carnegie course to Westwood kids. Now, Dale Carnegie, Warren Buffett said he doesn't have his certificate in his office for his college degree or his MBA at Columbia, but it's his Dale Carnegie. So, if you're getting out of college today to go to a Fortune 500 company, they would put you through a Dale Carnegie course, 24 hours of teaching you to be a leader, how to deal with stress, how to, it's tremendous, tremendous. So, thanks to Shaun and his work, this is the third year we're organizing it here, and kids will come into this room, I believe, and have the chance not, have to wait, do this before colleges, an unbelievable opportunity. So, I just want to let people know Shaun's publicized it, but if you have a kid that, you know, has any interest, it's a fantastic opportunity, and it's usually for college graduates, and so I wanted to give him a thank for that. And also, just, I think we may today have an opportunity to see the Westwood Third Grade History Day in action. We, we're in it this week, so every third grade in Westwood spends a day at the Fisher School as if it's 1868. They learn how to use quill pens, and we have a lot of volunteers, it's a little, it's a minute we will have a little Westwood Pia Sine, one minute, and you'll see it, one of the most famous actresses in Westwood is in it, teaching the kids how to come out of the tusk cap, experience. The Deerfield Watch to the school. The Studio X is a blogger.
Can I say something? This is a fantastic program. I know a number of people here have participated in this. It's a, it's a whole day, and Charlie has facilitated this. How many years?
I don't know, five.
Okay. He, how many classes do you do? Fifteen?
It's 12, third graders.
But it's, you know, continuous. He does an awful lot of work, and it's a great program. I don't know if there were other programs like that, but it truly is a day in the life of a kid who went to school that time, even the games that they play at recess time are games that they would have played in that era. So, I think, you know, we really should give Charlie a big shout out. And also, we're hoping that maybe we can give Charlie a handle this, or the school district, and maybe...
Well, we have a plan for that, so as you may recall, we are hiring an elementary social studies coordinator for next year, and so our plan is to hand it off to the social studies coordinator, because Charlie has done an enormous amount of work to make this happen, and it's just...
Well, I think we saved Joseph for embarrassing, because the highlight of the film is Joseph with a kid in the tusk cap. You can look to the kid.
No, no, but we can see his name as a W period. Yeah, I can be a little, yeah.
Bruins are out tonight.
All right, all right. Thanks. All right. Super dinosaur board?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, first of all, I just want to welcome Rena Jean-Daptiste, who's our new director of the finance. Rena has been with us for about a month now, but she started right after our April school committee meetings, and this is our first opportunity to officially introduce her. She's doing a great job, and you're going to hear from her in a couple of minutes. So, first on the superintendent's report, the MSBA project update. So, to bring you folks up to date, the school building committee has now completed the process of identifying OPM, the owner's project manager. It was a very comprehensive, kind of involved process where a subcommittee examined applications from 12 different companies, and they went through scoring process and interviewed candidates, and ultimately, the school building committee voted to enter into negotiations with Compass to be our OPM. So, we have submitted our package to the MSBA, identifying this as our selection. They asked for a lot of supporting materials to document the process was, and we are currently awaiting a response from the MSBA, or hope is that they will invite us to their June 3rd OPM selection committee meeting, and hopefully then everything will be finalized with the OPM. Once that's finalized, the next step in the process is to begin another selection process to identify a designer, an architect. That probably will take through the end of September, and once that process is done, we will have the team in place, and that team, then working with the school committee and the school building committee, will begin a community engagement process where we are really starting to get input from the community, because we will then begin the process of trying to figure out what, what the projects will look like. So, that's where we are, and the next meeting of the school building committee, in case anyone is interested in attending, is June 6th. School building committee meets in the professional development room here.
So, the OPM will be involved with the selection of designers and architects, they'll make recommendations.
Yeah, exactly. So, now that we have the OPM on board, it's wonderful, because these are people who have a great deal of experience and expertise in working through the MSBA process, and their job is to represent us, and to really, like, guide us, steer us through everything from here on in. So, I want to thank Mia for her leadership in that process, because we were all, we were involved in a big process and got a feel on our way through it, and I think it really came out well. So, yeah.
Congratulations, Charlie.
So, next, we have a FY '20 budget and staffing update. This is something that we started talking about last month, and I'm actually just going to turn it over to Abby to talk about where we are with this.
Sure. So, as well, since the budget passed, we've had a retirement of a preschool actor and a restructuring of that position, which gives us a bit of room to go back and look at our list. We thoughtfully did that with administrative council, and I think you have in your packet a recommendation, which is to add a 1.0 guidance counselor at middle school. Since that process has unfurled, we received further information about a different guidance position at the high school, and we think that turnover would allow for the 0.6 that's currently in the budget to go to 1.0. I'm happy to talk to you about the details of that. If you have specific questions, you have some information about ratios in your packet, if you want to talk through any of that, but the recommendation there would be to increase that to 1.0, and to make that decision this evening so that we could get into the hiring.
I just have one question in terms of shift at the high school. So, for those, yeah, some kids will be moved to guidance council.
That is correct.
How many kids will be affected by that?
That is not clear yet. I think, depending on the decision this evening, we go back and talk about what the scope and role would be, and then we look at all the numbers together with the guidance department head, Lynn, and make the best decision we could. But certainly, families would be affected, that's another reason we like to communicate earlier than later.
Would you keep kids who were maybe junior's and senior's with their guidance council so they're not switching?
So, it is too soon for me to answer that question, but I know they will be very thoughtful about all those different parameters. Yeah, I can tell you, just sort of historically, when we've added guidance counselors and had to shift case loads, they have often tried to keep seniors with their counselors for college admissions process to the extent possible.
Thank you.
And then, at the middle school, it looks like with the addition of the third, there's also going to be a restructuring there.
Correct. So, if you think back to Mike's excellent presentation, you could see how this ties into that idea about looking at the schedule of restructuring, because it gives us a chance to have guidance counselors at every grade level, and that then streamlines the, a number of team meetings that the guidance counselors need to go to, and that then kind of cascades down to their amount of time that they can sit through. So, it's really a very impactful decision, and again, grade level assignment would also require changes for families, and there would be impact, and we'd like to communicate that. And I would just note in memo, you know, that's a commitment, so that's something, if we do make that decision, if we make that decision tonight, we'd like to have that be in place for a good long while, because we'd be restructuring the whole building on this addition of staff.
What is the, at the high school, how many guidance counselors? I know, almost, would you add 1.0 or 1.2 still?
I was like 5.5, Shaun.
Yes.
Lynn has a different case load.
I don't know if she's wondering.
Yeah, she has like a partial case load.
She has a half case load.
Other questions? It's helpful to see the other towns and see how different places are organized and structured.
Is there a comment?
I will say, I met with Ms. Miss Gerg, my counselor, for seconds, and I wanted to communicate a big thank you for recognizing me for additional staffing, especially with a lot of students who, or they have big case load students who need, don't have the guidance counselors, and so I wanted to give a big thank you for considering that.
Good feedback from our students.
They think it would be very beneficial.
Any other discussion?
All right, so before we...
Yeah, do we need a motion?
I don't think we need to vote, I just, I'm just beyond board, and, great.
We can say thank you, for listening to what we said and reacting.
It was a nice process to go back and do some research and come back to that, that's really...
You don't always have the opportunity to go back to the list, and when that opportunity presents, it's not as early.
We appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just wanted to give a quick update on the security audit. As you know, the school committee has met to discuss the contents of the consultant's report, and luckily, at town meeting last week, residents voted to appropriate $100,000 as a supplement to the FAP '19 budget, explaining that we're able to begin spending now, so that we can begin implementing priority recommendations from that process. So, we're getting started on that work. You may recall that we've also applied for a grant, certain, like $60,000 from the Office of Public Safety, the state. The grant application had said that they were making decisions by April 26th, but in fact, they haven't made the decision yet. We have spoken to somebody there who's confirmed that it's not just that we didn't get the grant, that they are still in process, so we're waiting to hear about that. And I did send a letter to parents, when was that, last week, I think, just updating them about the vote at town meeting, and telling whether we are moving forward with this process. And I did also really want to take the opportunity of writing that letter to emphasize how committed we are as a district, not just the kinds of security measures that are, you know, technology and infrastructure, but that we're very focused on, also, all of the things that we know are important from a prevention standpoint, and I just think it's important to keep communicating that idea to folks as well. Any questions for that process? Okay, now I'm just going to turn it over to Rena, just to talk a bit about some HVAC.
Also, yes, as everyone knows, at the town meeting, the town approved their appropriation for $1,017,000 for school capital improvement projects. That appropriation was mostly for repairs and maintenance on our existing stock, but a subset of that, $192,000 was for HVAC replacements or installation in specific classrooms. And there was an amendment to the, to that appropriation specifically saying that in the case where the town does install new units, HVAC units, that we should consider cost benefit analysis of a renewable energy source unit. Now, in response to that specific amendment, we've done a little bit of research. First, for context, our operations department had previously, in making this recommendation for the capital improvements, had done some research on what would be the most energy-efficient units to purchase. They had recommended Mitsubishi units, which we have experience with, these are extremely reliable, and they are at the top 10% of the industry in terms of energy efficiency. So, that was our intent. Now, we spoke with Tom Philbin as well to see whether there is an opportunity to consider a new renewable energy alternative for this specific use in our classrooms. His instruction is that he doesn't know of anything like this that would meet our specifications, but that the industry standard is that when you have energy, an increase in energy consumption like this via the installation of new units, you would offset it with more generation or purchase of renewable energy sources of energy. And it happens to coincide, our efforts for these HVAC units happen to coincide with a net metering agreement that you may know about with ACA Solar, in which the town will be purchasing over 2 million kilowatts of energy, renewable energy, going forward. So, we find that ultimately, we are already implementing the best practice recommendation here, and that there's not really any further action. And finally, we also realize, I mean, we appreciate, I think, the intent of the amendment, and we would say that in, just to remind everybody, that in the current MSBA project, we are very conscious of green energy practices. We have, in the interview process with the OPM, specifically been looking for someone with net zero experience or passive house experience.
Next one up?
Yeah.
Are we purchasing these with, I guess, purchasing them in volume? So, do you go through like tech? Are we able to get a better rate because we're purchasing them with another school or with other schools?
It's actually not a very big volume, despite the investment. It's, I think, only five or six classrooms that will be addressed.
Oh, okay.
The other question, the elevator, possible? I know that was a bit hang chat, is that going to be done this summer?
I think so.
I think so, yes.
That's the best of my recollection of the last conversation. That's one of our problems. Oh, there's Ken right now. The elevator is on tech, yes.
It's scheduled to start as soon as school gets out, because it's part of last year's capital.
Great, thanks. All right. That is it. I had sent some information out to the school committee last week, because speaking of Tom Philbin, the town energy manager, he had come in to speak with me about a couple of potential solar projects. So, I sent to you the information that he gave me, and really, what I need some direction on is how you would like to proceed, whether, and how you would like to proceed from here, some more information you need procedurally.
I think the, I think a subcommittee would be a good idea to establish, and, you know, probably with the administration, maybe one of the members of the school committee, and to see if there's information that we don't have, that they want to present to us, and then make a determination that way.
Yeah, that sounds great. So, a couple members of the school committee, Rena, Ken, and I, if you could meet with Tom, and you can explore what the questions are first, right?
I'm happy to jump in.
I will, too.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you.
Fantastic, thanks. Okay, and now that's it.
Okay. We now move to public participation. This is an opportunity for residents to share their thoughts, or just ask that you raise your hand, and then when called on, please state your name and address if you're interested. Is there any public participation tonight? Just please.
Hi. My name's Hannah Gardner, and I live on Hyphen Street. Excuse me. I am here tonight to request that you all eliminate, or consider eliminating, the use of glyphosate containing herbicides on the, on the school fields and playgrounds. Excuse me. So, eight out of 10 provinces in Canada have restricted their use. As far as I know, across 23 states in, in the United States, multiple cities and counties have restricted its use. In Massachusetts, it's, it's been banned in Chatham, Easton, sorry, Eastham, Marblehead, Warwick, Wellesley, Falmouth, and Newburyport. It is a classified as a probable human carcinogen. It's been in the news a lot this year, because there are many lawsuits going on across the country by groundskeepers who are suing Bayer and Monsanto because they have cancer, and they are getting billion-dollar payouts, winnings, which I'm sure any groundskeeper would love, you know, to give billions of dollars, billions of dollars, but it's not worth the cancer that they suffered, and I don't think we would want any of our groundskeepers to have to deal with that. It is sprayed every year on our fields that I've lived here in April, and I believe at the end of the summer as well. Our kids are all exposed, our groundskeepers are all heavily exposed. I think it's on the Sheehan Fields, which are right next to a water source for Norwood, and I think you guys need to consider whether that's really how we want to be treating our fields.
Thank you, Hannah. Any other?
I do just want to clear for the school committee, the, the school department sends out a notice before the application for April break, that actually, if it is under the new town, take care of the fields, and, you know, I'm happy to pass along the concern to them, but I just note that, yeah, it's something that we will have to work with the town.
I, I thought that that might be the response, and it's been something that I've sort of spoken to the people at the Department of Public Works about, at least over the past several years, and they, their response is always that they sort of acknowledge my concerns, but that it's still legal in Massachusetts. And I, it's a goal of mine to sort of bring it up in terms of the town in general, because it's also sprayed on all sorts of, of public properties. But I think my biggest concern as a parent is the fact that it's sprayed on our school fields and playgrounds, and I didn't know if you guys had any, had really any authority to provide a recommendation, to provide suggestions, to at least weigh in and say that, you know, it's not consistent maybe with the goals of, of sort of the environmental goals of the schools, as sort of a...
Maybe you should go and speak to the board of select.
Okay.
I think it's...
Select the board. Except, except the board of select. Board of select, I'm sorry, select board. They usually meet on Monday nights, so.
We have a school committee, and these are school properties, and it's our school kids who are out there on the fields. I remember when Agent Orange, which agreed, proved chemical, defluval, so I think it'd be, I'd be happy to take the lead, to look into it, maybe talk with you, talk to schools of public health to see, you know, what evidence do these other towns have, and at least...
Maybe talk, you can go to the school.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to investigate it if I could, and just find out what's going on, and bring it to this committee to see, should we bring it to the select? But I think, I'd like to know more about it, on why are these towns banning it, and what do we know about it, and what evidence is there, because I can remember a lot of times when things were legal and harming people, and so I'd be happy if I was asked to do it, and to look at it, and come back with a report to you guys on this equipment showing.
A lot of the towns and cities across the country only restrict it's use on school grounds and on parks. Other places like Miami, Dade County, Marion County in California have really been much broader. Some, some restricted on all-town property, some say that, you know, it can't even be used on private residence.
And not to, not to promote a conversation here, because this probably isn't the time during public participation, but I guess I want to know, too, what they're using for, I think you make a great point, and what they're using for alternatives, and to be able to bring something to the select board, or whoever has the, the NSA, really, to be able to provide options, or what other, what other towns are doing in lieu of these pesticides, to bring a solution is always, I think, the great, the best way to address the issue.
Yeah, that was part of the reason why I sort of came up with a list of all that I could think of this afternoon, because we don't need to, you know, recreate the wheel. There are so many other towns, including those in Massachusetts, that have already found solutions that are effective and safer, so.
Thank you. Any other public participation tonight? Okay, thank you. CPAC, we're going now to the CPAC Special Education Update.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you, and I'm once again turning it over to Abby.
So do you want to pull the other demographic slides first, and then we'll transition?
Democratic slides.
Oh, then you, maybe. Why don't I just say it?
You know what, I, screen, be right back. Pull those up.
So I'll do this very briefly as we get ready to welcome the CPAC. But I want to say, Charlie, I believe at our last monthly meeting, you had requested an update on kind of what I think of as the, the status, state of the union in student services. And we've done this over a couple of years, and I actually think it's a nice thing to do at the end of the year. We do report data to the state for March of each year, so we have current accurate data that we're already pulled together. So, we have lovely slides, but I'll just explain to you what they say, which is essentially, as of the March reporting date, we had 571 students in the district who were identified as having an IEP. And, quick math on that date, we had over 3,100 kids, and it's 18%. So our, sometimes that's a number that people are curious to know. So essentially, 18% of the total school body would be identified as students who have a disability and have an IEP. If you're a comparator to the state kind of thinker, the average across all the towns and municipalities in the state is 18.6%. Beware of averages, they're not perfect math, right? As you recall, here in Massachusetts, we deviate a little bit from the federal government. We tend to be a tad more inclusive and progressive, so we actually have 11 federal and state categories of disability that people can be eligible under. And as in previous years, I think I want to keep going, I'm, you would not be surprised to know that the majority categories are health, under which ADHD falls. Look at this! Which is 143 students, as of this March reporting date, were identified as the reason they were eligible was under this health category. They don't all have ADHD, but a good majority of them.
Is that, is that sort of the catch-all category?
Nope. It's a, it's a, it's a specific category which has many federal paragraphs under it that rule in or out what comes under the term health. These things are not a perfect science, and I wanted to draw your attention to the term neurological, because neurological is being debated and discussed, and will probably be refined in the coming years, because everything is kind of neurological, right? And it's a poor term for things. In general, that includes students with seizure disorders who acquire traumatic brain injury or have other neurologically based disabilities. I bolded for you the, the areas that we see as our largest categories here in Westwood, and certainly autism, emotional disabilities, communication disabilities, and I put developmental delay over there on the other side, but that's still 61 students. Those are the majority of students who are in preschool, and are very young, and have yet to be formally diagnosed into a specific other category.
So broad is it, communication category?
Quite broad, so that's both expressive language, receptive language, and other things that you might remember from elementary school, that speech and language people help people with fluency, so, all kind of attacks.
Only a speech impediment?
Yep, yep. That's, not a term we use as much anymore. They kind of define exactly what it is, and, and it's usually either expressive or receptive. Yep. And I would just note that as our trend has been consistent over previous years, that our sensory disabilities, vision impairment, blindness, hearing impairment, deafness are, tend to be our lowest categories in terms of numbers of students. We call that low incidence, it's low occurring. However, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you, but that's the, the terrain as of right now. And then if you go one more slide, we have kind of a breakout by what we think of as level of need. And that isn't the same as severity of your disability, it's how many minutes of time you might need. And so if you need more than, say, 80% of your day with special education teachers, we would call that high need. So we've got 60 students who require the significant portion of their day to be taught by special education teachers and other related services staff. As you can see, and this is similar to our previous trends, the vast majority of kids are in the moderate category, and a smaller number of students are in the mild category, but we refer to it by level of need, so low, moderate, or high, and it really relates to the minutes of service.
Or the, the moderate and low.
So it's like 40% and then 10%. They're in, the minutes are confusing, because each type of level of school has a different amount of minutes, and it gets to be a little silly at a, at a certain point, but in general, the trend is that the vast majority of students are served by teachers who hold the moderate certification, and then we employ a different set of professionals who have a severe slash intensive certification, and they provide the services to students who have a high need. So that's that piece.
So we're going to the next slide, but out of those, for the 20, are those usually the, are they a subset of the 60 general, or not? The 20 out of district placements?
Oh, sorry, well, you're jumping ahead.
I know, I know.
So if you think of, this is the total number of students, then proceed. Inside that total number, 20 of those students, to answer your question, I think, are not served here in the district, they're served in other school settings, and those settings are either collaboratives, where we're teaming up with other local school districts and offering classes in our schools, and welcoming students from other towns in our collaborative, private day schools, and private residential schools, which are three subsets of schools that are comprised out of district. And that number 20 is approximately 0.6% of your total school population, so I would say you've built a school system that supports as much as 99.4% of your children here in the community. And then it's approximately 3.5% of the total number of students with disabilities. So if you think about that, that's kind of, you know, it sounds reasonable to me, that there's always going to be some kids that it's very reasonable for them to go to school in a more substantially separate setting, and then we work very closely with their families on what to decide to do year over year. Yep?
I have two questions.
Sure.
The 18% that you say is what our total population, what does that compare with previous years, or is the number up or down?
It's almost exactly the same. So yeah, some, one year we did this, and it was 17.6%, so you could say we've gone up 0.4%, but remember that the denominator's changing year over year, right? Our total number of kids is kind of oscillating, so I'd say that broadly speaking, it's a very stable number, as is the number of students in out-of-district placements and that general kind of curve that you saw where mild and moderate students are the bulk. Not, we haven't had a significant shift in any of those in the three or four years we've done this.
Thanks.
Yep. I'll just pass around to you, if you remember, we worked really hard a couple of years ago to be able to give people graphic organizers that describe the services, so I made you guys just another set, if you ever had a constituent with a question or something, and you wanted to share them, they're online. And I think we might revisit them for a new color scheme, like green isn't as pretty as I thought it was, so we're going to look at that. Any questions on that?
I used to sit out on the committee, I know, it's a colleague who's brand new to me, although he had kids who had IEPs. It was a miracle, they made it through school and college, thanks to the programs. But just the, we do this for preschool, and we do it for the elementary, middle school, and others. And just the talent of the staff that we have, that would be, I think, a good trust, just with the skill sets that they have. We did our social work, if we remember, that was a big battle about five years ago because of, of kids coming in and out of drug every episode. But the other thing is, how advanced are we relative to keeping kids in Westwood in Westwood versus having to ship them out, because we can't handle them?
We don't ship anybody off. Everybody's going to school with the right place that they should go to school, is the way I think of it, and we work really hard with people to, to find what's, what's appropriate, and what's the, the right thing for students to learn. And so I would say that students are in schools in the right places for them, and that we're in vast agreement with people about those placements. I would say, if you wanted to look at the specific job types, I'd be happy as we go into September, because we'll be all hired freshly, if you wanted to know how many teachers, how many IAs, you know, if you wanted to kind of just see the landscape of the professional staff, because to Charlie's point, they're wonderful, and they're responsible for the very good outcomes that the students experience here.
But what's amazing is the complexity of the kids' problems that we're taking care of. That, that's, you know, and, and that, that just amazes me, and I think it'd be nice to sometimes just to give people an idea of how complex it is for some of the kids. But then, how many, we, we take care of kids after their classmates have graduated, gone on. We help until they reach 22, and we try to help them adapt to jobs, and, you know...
We do more than that.
How many of those students do we have?
At any one time, we have probably around a dozen students for whom they elect to not take their diploma and stay, and they decide when they're going to move on, at 18, 19, 20, or on the day of their 22nd birthday, which is when their federal eligibility is complete. But it's a wonderful part of special education, and it's a great connection to community colleges and to the local workforce, and so you guys have probably heard a little bit about that, but I'd love to talk about that more, because that's really cool. So the most important thing, though, is relationships with people, and particularly parents, and so tonight, our opportunity is to hear directly from the CPAC co-presidents, and they're going to come on up and share with you what they've been up to, and it's wonderful. I'm going to get a second chair, so come on up. There we go. I have Megan Brink and Megan Flory. Well, thanks for being here.
You can just say hi, Megan. My name is Megan Brink, and I'm one of the co-presidents of the Westwood CPAC. Tonight, I'm going to tell you a little bit about myself, how I found the CPAC, and what we've sort of been up to for the past two years, and then Megan will tell you about some of the programs we offer to parents this year, and what our plans are for next year, and what we're hearing from our parent community. So, I found, well, so the CPAC, here we go, here's our mission statement. It's kind of long-winded, we haven't spent a lot of time redoing this, but because we've been so focused on finding the parents that we'd like to support. But one thing I do love about this mission statement is we inserted instead of the word disabilities, you see, we support children of all abilities. And especially when you talk about, I should say especially, when you talk about any of the children that Abby's just mentioned, when thrown into an environment with a whole bunch of other kids, suddenly it seems like they have a disability. But truly, they have very unique abilities. Somebody with ADHD or on the autism spectrum, they have superpowers that just don't fit into a regular classroom environment, and I think this concept of neurodiversity, and companies hiring consultants to figure out how to attract these employees, and make working environments, interview processes better for them, I think that that really, you know, I'd like to see, I'd like seeing what our school is doing with these students, to prepare them for that work world, and, you know, I just think it's great that, that we can serve all the kids with all these abilities, and not consider a disability. I would never tell my son he had a disability. I would just talk to him about his unique set of strengths and challenges, so, so that's that, that's my abilities thing. So I found CPAC three, exactly three years ago. My son was in kindergarten, he's now, and they're right about to go to Fisher School. Hopefully, he won't wear his Pokemon shirt for working. But I found it three years ago, when my son was diagnosed with autism. In fact, Donna Tobin was one of the people who helped me come to the realization, my son might need a lot of extra help in school, and I'm very grateful for that. At the time, we'd just moved here from California, my son was diagnosed with autism, and I didn't know any parent that was going through what I was going through. None of my friends had any of the same parenting stories I had, and I was desperate to connect with other people who were experiencing what I was going through. So I went to our school psychologist, and she recommended something called CPAC, which we didn't have in California, so I didn't even know it, and asked for it. And the first event I came to, thank you, Abby, because I'm pretty sure you organized it, was a presentation from the Autism Esperers Network, AANE, out of Watertown, and I was like in tears, because it was the first time I'd ever heard somebody talk about their kid, and I was like, that's my kid, that's my kid, you have my kid! And so it was just, it was, it was so great to find out, and I decided that I wanted to give that back to the community of Westwood, because there's got to be a lot of parents like me who are finding out later that their kids have stuff going on, they need extra help, and they're lost, like I was. So that's kind of my mission, is to get out there, find these parents, and see what I can do to support them, and selfishly to meet them myself. I'm still looking for those connections all the time. So, for the past two and a half years, Megan and I have been sort of running things, and we focus on having a monthly meeting where we bring in a speaker. Usually, the speaker attracts the parents. We've been trying to do sort of non-diagnosis specific events to attract a wide range of parents. We have about 15, five to 15 parents or professionals show up to each of our meetings. There's one topic that we've had on executive functioning, through organizational skills, homework tips, that covers more than just children on IEPs and 504s, and that event tends to get, you know, 30 to 40 parents who are looking for support. So, we have, in order to find out about CPAC, we have a closed Facebook group where parents can connect. Parents can join our Facebook page and connect with each other there. We also post events there. We've been posting events in the District Bulletin, which will now be posting events in the Westwood Wire, since that's going away. We use Constant Contact, we have our own email list to email parents about our events, and Abby has a list of parents that she, all parents with children with 504 and IEPs, she sends out events. So we have lots of ways to connect to the community. And we primarily provide support, education, advocacy for families of children, all the way from even before preschool through preschool. And, I think that's, that's all for my part. I'll remember Megan.
Yep. And so we've offered many events over the course of the school year, one or two a month, trying to hit on many of the diverse needs of families, whether it be speaking, speakers that we bring in, or getting people together to be socially connected and find their community, find their tribe. What we've found, though, is that, oh, we do always have a first set of group that comes in, we'll, and maybe we'll have one or two people that are repeat attendees, but by and large, we're always attracting somebody new with each of these events. As Megan said, though, we got about 10 to 15 people, some of it for most of the events, but some of them, we get a little bit larger turnout. But we've also noticed that, you know, it's really tough, it's really tough for us to try to pinpoint, you know, what's going to really make the mark for what the needs are, because there are so many different things going on. And for these families who are trying to attack perhaps attendance on these events, we need to understand that that can be a struggle in itself, because you lead a whole life, but as you have a child with different abilities, sometimes it's hard just to get out of the house yourself, to be able to participate in some of these. So although we have done a lot of work to put together all of these events, we've also noticed that, you know, there is this strong need to bring parents and caregivers together so that they can have this opportunity to actually converse and have time to network, learn about, you know, what each other is doing, some nature of support system, so, you know, they know that they're not alone within this, or within this community. So we're going to scale back next year in terms of structured speaker events. We hope that we can do some more coordination within the district with events that are being offered, and maybe do some cosponsorship, but then also offer more opportunities for parents to come together, caregivers to come together to, to, you know, have the opportunity to connect with each other.
So more social, less formal presentations, maybe.
Although we can cover less. So this is our last event of the school year, the opportunity to attend, where we're just keeping it very light and social event. It's a great day.
Come have some ice cream.
Yes.
I'll be right back.
Everyone here would be a graduation.
Oh, congratulations. Well, it's good, we'll attract the younger family. And on the other side of town.
No problem with her.
We'll take the traffic away.
I just wanted to say, I had the chance to attend a few meetings a few years ago. It was a group of parents who are like deers with the headlights, with their blue parents. You're just so worried that suddenly they'd be another parents who have been there for seven years. Well, this is what you do, I endure. So it's a wonderful organization to give you a support system potentially. The IDP one, Individual Education Plan, like you have. You know, you're going to meet with, the parent meets with three or four teachers, counselors, and so on. But one of the speakers, and it's on YouTube now, explains to the parent, "How do you prepare for the meeting? What do you..." It's just a wonderful way to just explain how you can be more helpful to your child, and to the teachers, to be more productive. So this, that was one, I thought was very impressive and valuable, you know, for the, you know, you know, five hundred kids out there that are having some kind of support. So it's a wonderful what you're doing. And I think that, you know, thank you so much for your volunteer work keeping it going, because it just makes the school system more helpful and more powerful. You're going right down to the parents who don't can tell you, you know, what to expect, but you suddenly meet other parents, that's probably the greatest gift you can get as a parent.
Now, I will give Megan a Megan, a chance for then one more slide here. And I think something that's been very helpful for us is that CPAC is able to gather parents and have some discussions and then, you know, give us feedback about what people are experiencing, how they're feeling and needs, things that they want to bring to our attention. And this is an example, I think, I'll turn it over to you to talk about.
Yes, yes, and that's exactly it, is that we do hear about other parents' experiences. And, you know, one of the things that became highlighted here was that there was some inconsistency from school system to school system within the district about how reporting bullying gets managed. And everybody has a different story, sometimes even within the same school system. So part of our role, we believe too, is that advocacy piece of saying, hey, you know, there's an opportunity for us to work better together here within this district to address how, you know, when a parent calls or sends an email and says, hey, you know, my child is reported, that I'm, you know, that they're being bullied, like what happens there? Each parent is getting a different experience. Maybe it's a conversation, but no, not every parent knows what the protocol is, or how they get this processed, or if there's a form that needs to be filled out, or what needs to be done. So we like to bring this to your attention because we'd like to your assistance as part of our advocacy here in creating a different experience, a more consistent experience for those parents who are coming forth, or even the children who are coming forth with recording bullying. Because, you know, bullying is a big hot topic. It's also, kids with special needs are also a very vulnerable population. And we would want to make sure that not just for all populations with special needs, those kids with special needs, and it's really hard sometimes. You don't even get the full stories sometimes because it's hard for them to communicate. There's a lot of other things going on. So we, again, we look forward to take a closer look at this and see what we can do to work better together on this.
It was good feedback, continues to be good feedback. And I think it's a great example, knowing that I know that, maybe, with Abby, to kind of give us this feedback. And as a result, the district leadership team, we devoted one of our admin council meetings to really then talking together about what's happening in school and getting on the same page and making sure that we have consistent practices. That's a great example of that communication. I always want to appreciate that.
And the good news is, that's all I have. I mean, I have just felt so encircled with love since I found all this out about my kid three years ago. So I just want to thank you all for the process, the professionals, and you driving. I'm just, I'm so grateful.
I think too, we have to thank Torville for bringing CPAC group together and making, expanding it. Because I think before you took it over, it wasn't functioning maybe as well as it is now. And I've heard wonderful things about it, so thank you all for that.
Well, I think the education piece is important, the advocacy piece is important. But I think probably the support piece and just the fact that you can walk into a room, tell your story, and have other people listen to you is huge. You know, as a parent, you know, I've attended these meetings, I've shared my own stories, and you do feel the love. And I think that as a parent, you know, we spend so much time advocating for our child and warning about our child that we forget that we need that positive reinforcement too. So I think that piece of CPAC is really valuable. You guys do a great job with that. And I think overall, just as I said, you kind of brought it back to life.
We report every year. Oh, here, I'll take it back.
So like the next on the agenda is a bit of an update on the district bulletin.
Yes, great, thank you. So I included in your packet a, you know, written report on the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen district goals. So what I thought I would just do tonight is I, I just want to quickly talk a little bit about how we're thinking about this work now because it differs a bit from the past. Some ways, it's very exciting. And I'm not going to, you know, go over every single action step in the status, but we have a couple of highlighted priorities. And what we thought we would do today is see if we can bring them to life a little bit by showing you some of these things in action. So just want to remind everyone that at the beginning of this year, we rolled out this document that we call the Strategy for District Improvement with our mission and core values. And what we did is the district is articulate four major strategic objectives. We call them the four big buckets. So they're on the left here, meaningful learning experiences, coherent, connected curriculum, healthy and supportive school, community, facilities. And, you know, these are clearly big picture things that's long-term. And then for each one of those objectives, we identified three, what we call strategic priorities for this particular year. And we talked, you know, these twelve priorities, we came out of a lot of conversation, a lot of working and work together. And though we called them our twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen priorities, we recognized at the time, and even more so now, realized that these are also ongoing things. And so what you're gonna see is that almost all of the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen priorities are gonna roll forward into next year. And I will tell you about sort of how we're thinking about it going forward. For us, what's interesting about these priorities is that they're really focused on the instructional parts. We're talking teaching and learning. And that they're interconnected and complementary. And so as the leadership team is talking about these priorities, we're constantly saying, this one's connected to this one, and this one supports this one. But these are all interrelated in some interesting and powerful ways. And we're trying to strike a balance between being visionary and forward-thinking, also paying attention to things that we think are sort of needs or issues around the table right now. So what's interesting from my standpoint, and I think from the other administrators' perspective, is that these priorities that we've identified really are becoming sort of like the water we swim in. And so we're thinking about them and talking about them all the time. When we're visiting classrooms, we're doing it with the lens of these priorities and that. You know, when I'm walking around the middle school, I saw this display and I thought, oh, curiosity, that's one of the values right there in action. When we look at the kinds of projects the kids are doing, when we're looking at the kinds of questions that they're engaging in in class, or they're thinking about curriculum and instruction, we're thinking about it from the lens of these priorities that we've talked about. In our budget process, we kept coming back to that document. And when we're developing professional development, we're doing it in the service of these outcomes that we're pursuing. So we've been talking about, first, I just want to explain how it's structured. So each of these priorities, we brought to you in the fall, you approved them. And then the administrators in the district went back and we said, how can we operationalize these? What would it look like if we were working on each of these priorities this year? What are the action steps that will be high-leverage and will move us forward towards this work? So just as one example, here's one of the priorities, expanding investment programs and practices that provide authentic students' interlearning. We said, all right, here are the three action steps we've identified this year that we're gonna work on, that we think are moving in that direction. And you've heard about those over the year, right? We've talked about expanding coding and maker spaces in elementary. We've talked about K-term. Mike, in his presentation, he was talking about the work he's doing with curriculum and their system and team leaders around us. So it really is the focus of our work. And so in your packet, I've taken each one of those action steps and given you what we think the status of that is. And that is a reflection of some work that we did as a leadership team about a week ago. So we keep coming back to this document. We did sort of a mid-year check-in to see where we were. That was great. It enabled us to, you know, celebrate closer about some things. And also to say, where have we not made as much progress and why? And what do we need to redouble our efforts on in the spring? This past week, the administrative council did a full-day retreat. And we spent the day assessing our progress and really thinking about where do we go from here? So the report that you have reflects that thinking and that, that work. So you've been hearing about these things all year, it's been, you know, so some of these things you've heard about. For instance, when we talked about MCAS, we're really doing around some of these things. You know, Jonas Schur came in and talked about K-term, for example. Allison gave the report about the SEL curriculum review. And of course, everything in facilities for the future, I've been talking about it for six months. So I'm not gonna tell you the status of those things because I think you know. But tonight, what we thought we'd do is just highlight these three priorities that we haven't talked about as much, but have been pretty significant for us this year. So the first one, I'm gonna turn it over to Allison.
So I'm gonna kind of just talk a little bit about what happened, what sort of impact we think it had, and what we're thinking about doing next. On top of what happened front, you know, our focus was on coaching, peer observation, and peer feedback. And I think with the particular focus on peer observation, something we always aspire to do every year, we talk about doing, and then kind of doesn't happen as much as we would like. So this year, I was really excited to see we have really major initiatives happen. The high school as an entire faculty really held this up as something that many people structured some of their professional goals around. And the science department in particular really embraced in a really exciting way. In addition, our curriculum teams vertically in English, math, and science, all scheduled peer observation visits vertically throughout the district. So folks could see classroom to classroom, what does it look like? Younger kids learning the same material and older kids learning the same material? And what does instruction look like and how is it different? We also did have teachers visit colleague to colleague kind of horizontally, going into the same classrooms, you know, third grade, third grade, or even visiting teachers outside their content areas. I want to share, these are a few graphics that the science department came up with. I think they're really cool, you know, they're sciency, you know, the visual representation guys. So Andrew Millers, the science department chair, shared this with me. And just gives you a sense of just how many people kind of popped in to see other people in action. Jimmy Looney here kind of wanted to see three of his colleagues. Nobody came to see him, I don't know why. Andrew, the department head, you can see he's very busy, seen lots of folks. But many people saw multiple colleagues in action within their department here in the high school. And then he also gave us a snapshot of what did it look like outside of the department? So folks visiting other high school teachers, but also making connections with their colleagues at the middle school. I'd say the science department in particular, this was really exciting work because that was the department where I think it, folks really had conversations that were about sort of kids' learning grade-to-grade, talking about where there might be overlap or gaps. Was part of that conversation more explicitly with this team of folks than it was with some of the other visits. But the other visits still proved worthwhile in other really important ways. I surveyed all the faculty who had been engaged in visits in some sense. I didn't get everybody to respond, but here's kind of some things I heard. This one I was really excited about. We didn't really talk about this as being directly about instructional strategy. It was more of a alignment. But it was really cool to see that out of the people who went out and saw other folks teach, the overwhelming majority of them walked out feeling like there are ways this is improving my instruction. On the next one, this is what we were really hoping for, and we weren't quite as successful. And I have some thinking about why that is. And I think where we were successful was with folks like the science department, where we had explicitly framed the visit as this is about gaps in repetition and curriculum alignment. Other folks were really just there, for example, the English folks were just there to kind of see what's happening. They were less concerned about gaps, were in the middle of the review. They're just trying to get a sense of what does it look like? Great level, the great level, the great level. Some interesting data, some awesome feedback from teachers. This first one in particular, talking about, should I read it? I don't know, you guys can help, we can't see it. The ability to see other teachers working on the same skills at different levels throughout the district helped me begin to see where my classes fit in our students' curriculum as they go through the district. It was especially helpful to see the grades above me so I can gauge what I'm doing to curtail my students for the next level up. It's exactly what we would hope for in this. People talked about the structure. The debrief was a great opportunity to promote collaboration and share knowledge between elementary and middle school staff. We've talked about from Emily's entry findings, this concern about a kind of rigor gap. And the two places we really focused, well, three places, math, English, and science. Those folks looked at that five to six transition and had some conversation about that. We were able to pose questions, share information with each other, and open new doors for continued communication. The third one, in addition to having sort of conferencing, people started kind of using different tools to structure their observation time. This one says, I had an observation sheet for the observer to fill out. It was simple, but asked the observer for specific feedback toward the goal. The person I visited did the same. In addition, we saw the same subject area. That was helpful because I can see where my students were going for next year. The teacher could see what she was hoping out from here. I think that's it for that. Next steps, some things we learned. One thing we learned kind of as we went through the process is people need some structure and tools to have this be really meaningful. It's one thing to say, go visit somebody and see what you see. It's another thing to give folks some framework for what are you looking for? What do you hope to find? How are you gonna use it? In addition, that time to meet, ideally both before and afterward, but at least afterward so that teachers have the chance to talk to each other about what they observed was really critical. Finally, a calendar, getting some sense of like, what are these gonna happen? And just sort of setting that up ahead of time. It's a hard thing to get teachers out of their classrooms. Once they're there, they like being there. It's actually kind of additional work to step out because they have to plan for a sub, and then they have to kind of get the class back on track when they come back after the sub's done there. So I think trying to help folks by establishing structure. Also, we learned that if we really want people to focus on gaps and repetition, we need to tell them that that's what we need to focus on. So clarifying purpose upfront was important. And then finally, one real impediment we ran into was sub-coverage, which is a problem throughout the state and actually in other states as well. Substitute hiring has been in the news, it's a real dilemma. In order to make this happen, we have to be able to cover people and spring them out of class periodically. And we ran up against a number of situations where we had to cancel or postpone visits because of sub. So that's another thing for us to work on.
The process is very interesting. The, if I were to go in and observe to do this, I've learned a lot. Is there a way to capture a lot of the different observations? So what I thought, what I saw that was fascinating, interesting, could be shared with somebody else. And I look at it with someone else, just so we, in science or whatever it is, you know, the combination of all the stuff.
I think one of the reasons I've been working really hard with the curriculum leadership teams is because they have the capacity to do that really well. So the curriculum leaders help structure these visits, they help debrief, and then they took that information back to the whole department to discuss afterward. I'd say out of everyone in the science department were real rock stars.
Share whatever.
They sort of shared the money back.
I used to work, yeah, co-sign. I always said, see, if I just had one or two paragraphs, statement of what we've been doing up until now, what might you do now? Maybe those people... Maybe those people didn't know they were going to be outsized to do it. But even to ask for some document, it might have helped the person be a little bit more on target. I don't know if it's a change or not.
Right now, we just need bodies.
I just want to say that I think for the time that I've been on the school committee, we've been talking about alignment and vertical alignment and peer review of each other's work. It's so refreshing to see that we're actually finding a way to implement those goals. And I just think it's true.
I would have to give a lot of credit, I want to, first of all, the sort of vertical leadership of curriculum has been really critical. Those folks kind of really capitalize and organize it. And also, school leaders who put it on the forefront. Because it was a district priority, I know Sean and other school leaders really said this is a priority, and they helped provide coverage and they helped make it happen.
Okay. Second highlighting priority, under helping support in school community, implement programs and instructional practices that recognize and support the needs of students and families and increasing the diverse communities. We did a number of action steps under that. What I just want to highlight is that we came at this by thinking about, how do we, what do we need to do in terms of programming for students? What do we need to do in terms of programming for parents? And what do we need to do for developmental development for teachers? And Allison, I'm sure you're trying in and saying, and recruiting, I agree. But so I just want to quickly think about students, parents, and teachers. So one of the things that we have mentioned periodically is some of the student programming that we're doing. Tonight, I just thought I would like the courageous conversations initiative at the high school, which has been just really exciting. So on the left here, you see a picture from a program at the high school called Minding Your Mind, which is about mental health and suicide prevention. On the right, this year, for the first time, we had an LGBTQ alumni panel. Some of our graduates came back and they straightened out their experiences at Westwood High School. Very powerful to hear from kids who are graduates of this building to talk about their experience. And the folks who came back, it was from like the seventies to, you know, two years ago. So it was interesting to see that. They've been wonderful programs. And part of what I just want to let you know is that we have been gathering feedback from students about the impact of the programs. And this is what I mean about thinking about ways that we can kind of uncover what's the impact of this, you know? We're placing our bets on certain things that we think are important and high leverage, but we want a bit of sense of whether they're working. So I just took it up as a snapshot from that LGBTQ alumni panel. And, you know, you see that the feedback is great. How would you rate this assembly as a whole? Overwhelming, very well received. Was it a good use of your time? You know, we're trying to ask discrete questions. And in addition, there were a lot of open-ended questions. So I just plucked a few examples of what kids said in response to, what was your biggest takeaway from this program? And I'll, I'm going to give you a minute or two to take a look, because I have to say, that's what they said were so thoughtful, fantastic. And, you know, as I read over hundreds of responses, there were some really strong themes that came through, and I think that these represent some of those.
Especially after both the events that you showed, the courageous conversations that we had deeply sessions in our classes afterwards. And that was an opportunity to not just go to the assembly and go right back to class and just go on with your day, but a chance to talk about what you were, what you saw. I have a feeling if you had questions, the one we had on the day bounce with the whole discussion of creating like a supportive environment to talk about those things. Because it can be like, some of these can be like uncomfortable topics.
Yes, so I'm glad you teed me up for the next slide. Another question that we asked about that, where I think that's really important. So the question is like, how valuable was the program, the speaker, the assembly? And then like, how valuable was the debrief? And I have to say, as I look at the class programs, the value of the speaker was typically very, very high. There was more of a spread in terms of people's perception of the debrief. And when you dig into some of the comments, you can see why, you know, different people were more comfortable talking about different topics. Sometimes you get, you know, it was too much time for the debrief, and then you get all the other people say, we didn't have enough time, we're just getting started. But in this case, and I think it's important, the name of the program is courageous conversations, right? And so the debrief and the dialogue from peer to peer afterwards is part of the goal of the program. And so this question was framed up about sort of how the debrief went, how comfortable you felt with that. And it asked a question about how likely would it be to participate in another conversation if we offer another program, a different program? Which I thought was an interesting way to frame it up. And again, and it was really, I thought, interesting to read how thoughtful kids were in their comments about that, that process as well. And I have to give credit, because a lot of kids specifically called out how important it was, the way that the teacher framed the conversation. I think the one down here in yellow kind of speaks to that issue, right? The teacher made me feel very comfortable participating because she told us it's okay to say the wrong thing by accident, because we just need to assume that everyone's doing their best to be respectful and no one's intending to be disrespectful. There was a lot of that kind of theme of like openness, it's okay to kind of wrestle with ideas here. So I think that's been a really impressive program, and I want to thank Sean and also there's a whole cadre of faculty members that are instrumental in planning that and kids, they have something called Think Tank that works on this program. Parent programming this year, for the first time, we decided to create a year's worth of programming and roll it all out at the beginning and try to really promote it. And I have this lined up here in the context of the particular priority about supporting the needs and increasing the diverse community. We had a couple of parent programs about that, maybe that Race With Our Children, Preventing Bias is brilliant. I think that the Talking About Race With Our Children was really interesting. It was a three-session workshop that we did, and it was billed as kind of a coming call if you're interested in this for the first session. And then at the end of the first session, the facilitator invited people who wanted to sort of dig in further to come back for sessions two and three. I attended all three sessions. And what I thought was powerful about it was that, whereas at the beginning, a lot of the questions were kind of directed to the school, you know, what are you doing? What about this? By the end, it was a room full of people in a community, talking to each other about the community, about the challenges of parenting, and how the school and families partner. And it was really quite a journey. And the folks who participated wanted to gather each other's contact information at the end, and we created groups so people could stay in touch. So we did those programs and supported this priority. But I would also point out that if you look at the other topics, the entire year's worth of programming was designed in supporting priorities in the strategy, right? You can see science, you can see the digital citizenship, et cetera. And then family professional development, what else was there to say?
I'll just say briefly that kind of what happened, we had, a number of things happened in individual schools, I'll just talk about some of the district-wide pieces of this this year. We had a couple of fall training sessions for an organization called Ideas, which is an EMI. And they do information for teachers about identity and understanding the role that identity plays in the classroom and the school environment. And it really kind of preparing, kind of teeing up a bigger event for us, but also preparing teachers to start to grapple with difficult things that can come up in the context of any classroom. And I think, I'll be honest with those, I think those were well-intended, but it's an outside organization coming in. The groups were a little bit too big, and people's feeling was like, this is a good conversation to have, but it's a little canned and they're too big. So I think regrouping from that, we decided we need to come at this a little different way when we move into the future. One piece of this puzzle, though, that really, I think was very impactful, our full professional development day was organized with some input and support from Cheryl Goodlow, and actually a number of Metco directors from throughout the greater Boston area who were friends and colleagues of Cheryl. We recruited David Johns, who's the head of the National Black Justice Coalition, and who was the keynote speaker of last year's Metco conference. And he's, he was just a sort of tremendous person, an educator through and through. He worked with some of our students, some of our Boston students, ahead of the full day, and asked them, you know, what's great about your school? What do you love about it? What works for you? And what's not working so well? And what would you ask of people? What would you ask of the educators in the room if you had the opportunity to speak to them? And he worked with them, and then we had a group of five wonderful high school students who got up with his important help in framing of the conversation, and sort of shared, here's what I'd like to see on Westwood. And then as a follow-up to that, we had educators from throughout the area who gave a series of workshops that went along with that theme of how do we support our kids of color, specifically our African-American kids in the school. I think it was a day that was really focused on that particular population. Feedback was tremendous from that. I think the presenters were good, the keynote was great. And I think the big question that came up was how do we keep this going? An exciting spin-off is we have a group of twenty-five, twenty-six now, educators from throughout the district who just volunteered to join a working group to kind of keep the conversation going. That group has had some initial discussion about what can they do around professional development, what are some things to do about recruiting and hiring. They would like to try and put together a brief program for our new teachers as part of the induction process. And also, are thinking really carefully about, you know, what do we need to learn ourselves? And then how can we be a resource to other educators?
So they're going to talk about recruiting?
They're going to try. Recruiting is challenging. We have, as part of this initiative, we took a couple of key steps this year. You know, we'll have to see how successful we are, we're kind of right in the mix with every other metro west community that's not got a lot of diversity. But we have a couple, a couple leads on some possibilities, depending on how the jobs are, season goes this year, and about how do we work and keep working. We're also talking about gathering some good base planning as we have a sense of cohesion.
I actually, I put this photo, so this is one of our students who's speaking, and that takes a chunk. Yeah. And so this was the slide we chose, is a photograph of an English student, and put it, really to talk about this issue. These are fantastic teachers, and, you know, you have to imagine that we all have their big, it's not like we don't know. But to hear and talk about that, the impact is, it was very, very powerful. So, okay. Okay, and then finally, I'm coming, Esther Letford. So our final highlighted priority, also under helping and supporting the school community, has to do with helping students navigate the technology-infused environment, and hopefully be a little balanced.
Thank you. Yeah, so this is a slide on a slide. This is actually a screenshot from last year, I gave a presentation, it was kind of a technology update, a lot of number of things, including coding and some of the parent outreach we had done. But I, on this slide, I talked about kind of some goals around responsible use. And I particularly talked about grade five and six, which were areas that in our department, we really have been talking a lot about, trying to really kind of address responsible use at that level, because that's when the kids are going to middle school, when it's the first time they have to take home Chromebook one-to-one program. So we discussed it, it's also tied into our guiding principles document, which is for technology. And it also aligns very well with the district goals, which I think is on the next slide. Again, it's the expanded efforts to help students navigate the technology-infused environment. There are several things that are reported on in your packet. One of the action items was to move grade six responsibly used lessons into the advisory program. We actually did a lot more in grade six than just that. We actually created kind of an expectation referral system, so that it was clear to kids, here's the expectation, and if you don't meet the expectation, then there could potentially be a consequence. We tightened up our filtering policies, we definitely increased messaging to students. I want to give credit to Mike Redmond for giving a really consistent message to students. And we really addressed this at grade six. Why we addressed it at grade six, I kind of talked about, was because that's when the kids first get the Chromebook, it's a take-home program. But we also wanted to assess, you know, what's the impact of some of these actions? I can tell you that the impact was very obvious. You can see that we did do a survey of teachers, eighty-two percent reported that students in grade six this year were better or far better. And when I say better or far better, I'm talking about just their attention to using the device as a productive learning tool versus say, something where there may be some distraction going on. And you can see some specific comments that teachers made about that. So I feel really good about that. In fact, it's our intent to scale this up. We feel that it's important that at, particularly at middle school, that all the kids are understanding of, you know, the importance of the productive use of technology. So we will scale it up, and we expect to see similar results in all grades next year, six, seven, and eight. One other, the last slide that I have, I wanted to comment on, this is not in your packet, but we also have a program at the high school. It was formerly called the freshman seminar, and we rebranded it to the Westwood, WHS Digital Citizenship Seminar. And all students in grade nine attend this on a once every cycle basis in the fall, or actually during the entire first semester. And in the past, it's kind of been a more of a kind of stand and deliver, kind of, here are some topics presented to the kids. It's been completely kind of flipped, and now it's really about performance tasks and really having kids create some kind of artifact as a result of being in this program. You can see one example here in the distraction management topic area. Students actually have to create something, and they have to submit it to our instructional technology coaches, which are the ones that are actually delivering the seminar. And they have a choice. They could install an app or extension on their phone that helps with focus. They can write a plan or pledge about how they may manage their time or keep a log, and they must present that to the teachers, illustrating that they've actually done something related to some of the topics. I wanted to share that. Again, that wasn't part of kind of the district plans, but it's something that we've been thinking about at all levels, and I think it's a very important topic.
Excellent.
You're welcome.
And so, to wrap it up here, what's next, I will say, we're happy to talk about any of the priorities that were in the report, and we chose these to present. You know, the administrative council was very much right now thinking about next year, which is exciting. We have, we've very deliberately and mindfully hold the planning process for the following year earlier than we've ever done before. So in the past, we would be doing a leadership retreat on this, but we just decided that that doesn't give us sufficient time to really do the foundational work we need to do to make the year conducted. So we're thinking about this right now. But I would just say that we would obviously welcome any input from the school committee about next year's priorities, and perhaps in our journey, maybe a few of things that they wanted to discuss that'd be helpful, because our plan is to begin the year with the priorities and more specifically, the actual action steps for the year articulated, rolled out. And critically, excuse me, the school improvement plans often flow from the district strategy. And so in order for the principals to do the work they need to do with their site councils, we really need to make a lot of progress in this in the spring. So input would be welcome and helpful. I will tell you that during our conversation last week, as we looked at sort of those twelve priorities, three per big bucket, there really is only one that we think we need to see, well, pop for a name, actually back up. The facilities for the future bucket, I think we all need to talk about. For the other three buckets, there's really only one. So for three years now, we've been focusing on STEM, in the process of a three-year rollout for new science curriculum. And we're going to be, we're putting that one aside. rollout for new science curricula. And we're going to be, we're putting that one aside, still teaching STEM, right, but we're putting that aside. And the priority for next year are going to be social spaces, civics, with those new frameworks coming in. So we're going to be identifying our action steps for next year. And then I would say this is the next frontier for us as a team, that, you know, a lot of the action steps that we have are articulated, is what I would call outputs. These are things that we're going to do. And I think that's actually very valuable, but those outputs are things where we're placing our bets, that they're moving us towards these outcomes, which are the four big buckets, learning expenses, for example. And so we've started some early discussions about how do we articulate and then monitor indicators that we're taking the outcomes, that these things that we're doing incrementally are working and moving us in the right direction. So I've kind of talked about early and lagging indicators, right? What are the things that we would first expect to see? And then what are the things that after that, we think we would see next if we are making progress? So that's where we are, and I'm excited about the work. And I have to say, I just...
Don't say it. You can't talk in here. Can we, I'll interject one here.
[laughing]
So can we have, we've done this before with the committee when we had particular issues where we, instead of having a report, we discuss, we discuss circles.
Yeah.
Can we do that?
I think that's a great idea.
And so we can, you know, that'll give us a chance to kind of go back again and look at this and come up with our own thoughts. And then we wouldn't have a discussion.
Yeah, I think similar, I love this idea. Similar, like we did the budget process, every member or whatever it was, we had a pre-discussion. I think the previous board is a great idea. So yeah, I think that's great.
All right. What I want to say, if I can get it out, is kudos to this team of people I work with. Here, habits, thoughtful, skilled people. And exciting to do this work. But yeah, I just want to give my shout out to the team.
One of the, just to go, I think of the school committee calendar, and I saw you were longer about all the, you know, program for parents. And I think a part of that, it'd be great to also think about the fall and the building project and stuff. Because I know there's, as much as you think there's a lot of time, there aren't as many dates as you think. So starting to get that calendar together.
Ahead of time would be great, I think, engagement piece.
Yes.
Because it's really only when you're, between October and Thanksgiving, and then...
Everybody's off on their...
Yeah, so it's not, yeah, much time to, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. So any other, any other questions on this?
Clearly, I think we need to move on.
Yeah. All right. So I think we can, we don't have to talk too much anymore. So the second reading of the rise now.
I'll take that. I got it. So you guys are on your second reading this evening of a policy, A C A B, non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation. We put out a query for questions from the committee. We got a question which was around, in the event that a harassment claim was made against one of the people who the district in the policy identifies as the investigator, what would we do? So we consulted with our attorney, and the answer is that we would hire an independent workplace investigator, and that that will be included in the guidelines document, which will flow from the policy once you approve it. We have experience, and Emily and I, a couple years ago, attended a training, and it is a, it's own a field, independent workplace investigations. And there is an approved board of those people and a credentialing process, and we actually have some connections to them from previous experience. So we are permitted to doing that to ensure that there's a firewall, if you will, inside the guidelines that allows for independent investigation should we ever need it in the district. So that was the answer to that question. Are there other specific questions we can tackle?
I just want to comment, if that's something that we would certainly use if there was something where there was someone here who wasn't able to investigate it because they're part of the program. But also, we might use that under other circumstances where we just really needed an outside view, a third party.
So can we waive the second one?
If you waive the second reading, and if you want to do it tonight, we would then get the guidelines in place for some time.
I make that motion.
All those in, any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Sorry, was that a motion to waive the reading?
Yeah, you've got to waive.
And also, so I guess we need another motion to put it up there. I can make the motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you. We'll bring you guidelines and all.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good. So now we have some actual answers. Approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April ninth.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
So Mr. Redmond wanted me to point out, so this section on his report.
Yeah.
Next to the last page. He mentioned that Chris talked about math being currently leveled. Any thoughts on what are the courses other than math? So Mr. Redmond is not having conversations about whether he can do math in other courses. What he was talking about with math levels is thinking about how we can articulate parents in the community, what the meaning of the difference between math is.
Okay.
So, okay, this third page from the pen.
Third page.
At the top, second paragraph, starts Chris.
Yeah.
Okay. So we would strike, Mr. Redmond's having conversations about whether this can change. He's not having those conversations.
Okay.
But he's having conversations about how we can articulate parents' math levels in his entry findings where there's some confusion. Is that accurate?
Yeah, it's that we're exploring that, and, you know, we're going to be going through a math review process that, in the future.
That's what we're exploring.
Wait, wait.
We just didn't want people to read that. We're on the verge of wondering everything in this book. That's...
So you want to strike the last one and say, Mr. Redmond?
He is having conversations.
Having conversations.
About how he can better articulate to parents, what the distinction between the math levels. So that makes sense?
Yeah.
But again, okay.
We all writing.
I don't know. We haven't invented...
[inaudible]
I'll make a motion to approve the modified version of minutes of A twelve Mac.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, none. All right. Neanderthal school choice. Do we actually have to read this? I know it will pop out.
This is a, this is sort of, it's in one.
Yes.
So annually, school committees in Massachusetts have to devote on school choice, and school districts are assumed to be in the school choice program unless you opt out. Okay? So I give you here the language, and you do have to read the motion, and it has to be a law. And then I have to slip that to the state.
Are we hearing it? Whereas the Educational Reform Act of 1993 requires that the enrollment of non-resident students under the school choice provision, unless the committee votes by June 1st not to participate. And whereas school committee provision takes away money from the sending district and awards it to the receiving district, and whereas Westwood's per pupil expenditure is greater than the maximum allowable reimbursement, which means Westwood would subsidize each choice student, and whereas there's no provision for selecting students who might better fit Westwood's educational system, and whereas once Westwood accepts a pupil, it must keep the pupil through graduation even though Westwood's demographic situation might change considerably, and whereas it is likely that a number of students will return to their sending districts or otherwise leave Westwood, thus creating a potential income loss, now hereby be it resolved that the Westwood School Committee respectfully declines to participate in the school choice program, with the provision that should surrounding school districts subsequently and prior to June 1st decide to accept the provisions of school choice. The Westwood School Committee reserves the right to do likewise in order to protect its fiduciary interests in this matter.
I think, sorry, any motion?
Second.
That was, that wasn't the...
I have a move, right. Sorry, I have a second. All right, now I think the whole call. Mr. Donahue.
The vote is, we have a...
Yes, yes.
I vote yea.
Mr. Donahue, black.
Yea.
I would vote yea. Don't care if it's black.
Okay.
So the final thing before any business is the school committee meeting dates are in...
That one's in.
Oh, all right. So...
The select board reorganized on the 13th. They had previously reaffirmed in this meeting that the current chair of this board would be their representative of the school committee. So you need to vote to change the membership from Mike Walsh, remove him from the SEC, and add Nancy Hyde. Do you vote? And I just...
Do I have a motion?
I'm going to make that motion.
Just a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Final thing before any business is the school committee meeting dates. They're in the packet. I guess two things. One, does anyone have any challenges to dates right now, as well as we know?
Listen, my social challenge is very...
I know.
Doing next week.
You can bring your husband to the meeting.
Is it?
But I'll...
You're coming.
Wow. Does Javon come?
Javon won't even notice.
I have my 50th birthday.
What's that?
Once on my 50th birthday.
Really?
I don't think we need to...
I'm not sure I'm going to tell.
We'll find out.
You were.
It's like a delivery in the middle of it.
We'll drop, we'll come up with something.
The other thing I did want to mention is the school committee. Historically, we've had an additional meeting in the summer where we kind of, given this year, yeah, given this year, especially with the building project, I think it makes sense if you guys agree with that. We'll have John work this out, though?
Yeah.
Great. All right. So do I have a motion to approve the...
So vote.
Yeah.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Five zero carries. Okay, any new business?
Yes. So we want to take this opportunity to thank Chris. I have a wonderful question to the school committee. Thank you for your, it's in your input. And we understand that Chris is off to Syracuse University next year. And, of course you are, because we have a bag full of Syracuse magazines. And with our best wishes brought to you, Chris.
You now know what dates he should come back and visit us.
Thank you. So finally, we are going to move to executive session. The school committee will now return to the public session. We're going to move to executive session, discuss strategy, respect, potential litigation, which you discussed in the meeting, but have a detrimental effect on the decision's body. So do I have a motion to move to executive session?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
We're coming.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.